Hi there, welcome back to another episode of the Mind Your Liberty Podcast. My name is Andrew. Today's date is February 26th, 2023. And as you can hear, my voice is totally wrecked. I apologize for that. I've got a little bit of a cold. Uh, my voice is suffering, but I wanted to go ahead and get the episode out. I had the privilege of having a conversation with a gal here in town who's on the school board. She's a Christian lady and is passionate about education. So I wanted, I had some questions. I have just wanted to ask her for a long time. And I was interested to know more about the job. She was willing to have a conversation with me and she's willing to have me share that conversation here. So before I get into it, I will warn you. We were doing a remote conversation on Zoom, which limits us to 40 minutes of conversation. And we ran into that stop. So there's a little bit of a disconnect there. She was saying something that cut off. And then we picked back up in a consecutive call. But a little bit got lost, but I apologize for that. But that's just the way it is. So enjoy the conversation. All right. Hi, Kim. Thanks for joining us here today. Uh, I apologize right off the bat. My voice is half shot. I've got uh, cold. Uh, as it happens, it would happen on our interview day. So I apologize for that right off the bat. Thanks for taking the time today to do this interview. I've been looking forward to this interview for a long time and I'm glad it's finally happening because I have just, I've got a lot of questions and I'm curious. And I figure other people can learn with me at the same time. So
I'll do my best. Thank you, Andrew.
I know it'll be educational. So Kim, uh, give us a five-minute biography. Tell us, tell us about yourself.
Well, do you want me to start from the cradle or you would prefer much later than that?
Uh, you got, you got five minutes. What, what do you do? Uh, what, what did you do? And where, how do we get where we're at now?
Well, I am a military bride. So my husband and I graduated out of Savannah, actually. And he joined the Air Force and we had, we moved all over. So I spent a lot of that, I had some education, some college education before. But then finished that while we were active duty military. So I, um, I hadn't planned on being a teacher. But it seemed that God opened some doors for me. I asked him when we lived and were stationed in Arkansas. I was praying about a career. And just said, you know, if I, if I could have a job when I was off, when my boys were off, when they were on vacation from school and during the summer, I would love that kind of job. Well, it is teach. So that's how I got involved, um, the latter part of my life with them. I was a stay-at-home mom for a long time and it still, I subbed and I taught. And taught in Guam, taught in Hawaii, taught in Arkansas, taught all over everywhere.
And that's everywhere you were going in the military and stationed. Okay.
Yes, yes. Um, we, we were stationed also in Florida and that's where I ended up, uh, finishing degrees and then in Hawaii, uh, I finished my masters through, uh, Troy University out of Florida. And that masters was in counseling. So a lot of teaching and then a lot of counseling. And have taught in Ohio, in Illinois, and now also in Missouri. So a lot of education in my background and, uh, and actually in Guam, I was a vice principal. We were only there a couple of years, but I was a vice principal in a middle and high school, private school. So it kind of got me interested in administration as well as teaching.
Okay. And when you were teaching, what age groups were you teaching?
Oh, it varied. It varied. Like in Guam, it was middle and high school. In Hawaii, that also varied. In Florida, a lot of middle school, which tends to be the roughest. When I applied for a job there, I, and I had planned on just substituting because I was finishing my masters. And I took my application into a school. And they said, you really want to work at that school? They sent teachers out of the room crying. And I just thought, oh, that, that won't be me. So it's just been an interesting course of life. Teaching, counseling and just appreciating where God has sent us.
Very good.
So I don't.
So that brought you all the way up, uh, into St. Joseph, the military?
It did. Wes, my husband retired out of Illinois, out of Scott Air Force Base. And that was the most we had ever been anywhere. We were there for 20 years.
Oh, nice.
And then he retired out of a second job and we moved here to Missouri.
Okay. All right. So a long career in education and counseling and you've got a masters in education or counseling, you said?
Yes.
All right. So I, I know you, uh, through uh, the little group, the little liberty group here in St. Joe. And, and also you came to the church we were attending at the time. Um, and I knew you from church and I went, I heard through the liberty group that you were running for school board back in, that was 2022, right?
Yes.
I think so. And you, I think are the only position I have ever canvassed for. I hung a few hundred uh, door hangers for you because I heard, I knew, I knew you are, you are the mom of a friend of mine and that you were, uh, gonna be a good choice for school board. So I went and I hung a few hundred door hangers for you. And I think, I think you're the only person I've ever done that for. Um, so I was excited to be part of that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I thank you for being willing to run and I've wanted to have this conversation and I'm so stoked that we get to now. So why, uh, why did you? Well, first, let me back up. So I cared about the school board. And then I'm going to ask you here in a second, but for me, I homeschool. My wife and I have homeschooled our kids for, uh, since the beginning and I was homeschooled and my wife was homeschooled. And so it was a fairly easy thing for us to say, we're going to homeschool. God's, God's blessed. We made that commitment. We were going to homeschool for our family. And I think that's for me personally, that's what God wants us to do, but and also I direct, I don't know if you know, I direct the local classical conversations foundations and essentials program for the younger kids here in town. Um, and so I like, I care about my family and I'm trying to facilitate for families, you know, a little bit broader circle to make a difference for families that are trying to raise their kids for God's glory and God's kingdom. But I, I can't bring myself to just forget about the millions of children in the public school system. Um, so I, one of the two, two heads of the snake, I said in this last episode, I put up that the two big problems I see with this country, like physical manifestations are the Federal Reserve and the education, the government schools. And I can't do a thing about the educations or the, uh, Federal Reserve. But if we can reclaim some of the educational, uh, the government education and, uh, if we can get a education of, uh, generation of kids that can think and use their heads, then maybe they'll be smart enough to tackle the Federal Reserve problem and some of these other big problems. So I'm not willing to just say, I'm good with homeschooling my family. I, I do care about the millions of kids in the public school system, but it's like there's only so much I can do. I can make a big difference for my family. I can make a little bit of a difference for, you know, 12 or 15 families in my CC community, but there's only so much I can do for the millions of families, but I'm not willing to just forget about them. I, because I don't think, for me, that's not what God's called me to do. So that's why I was interested in the school board. Um, and why I'm interested to have this conversation. So I can learn a bit more about that. Um, so now that you've got kind of my side, where I'm coming from, what drew you into putting your name in the hat for the, the school board running?
That's a great question, Andrew. It didn't, it didn't cross my radar until someone asked me about it. Um, they said there were a couple of seats open on the school board and why don't I run? And I thought, really? You know, we're just getting our, our feet back in it here. And I thought we were retiring. Um, and then Chris asked me, my son asked me about running because of the impact that the school board can have on students in the classroom and just the general community. So I thought, wow. You know, it came from a couple of different places, the request. So I started praying about it. Because it's a, it's a huge commitment. It's a, it takes a lot of time and a lot of prayer. And a lot of reading, a lot of meetings and just, um, stamina. And you have to have a thick skin. So I thought, wow, Lord, do you really want me there? Is this really why we're in Missouri, other than our family? Um, and is this what you really want me to do? And wow. So I just, I just kept praying and thinking, I don't know, I don't know, but I went in and signed up on the last day that I could. I handed in my paperwork and everything went fine. But I thought, once I did that, I needed to commit. If I'm going to put my name in, I have to be serious about it because God was. God was very serious and that's what he wanted me to do. So purposefully, that's what, what I did and why is because I felt it was God's call on me here. And one of my favorite scriptures is, uh, out of Esther. For such a time as this, we're called to do something for such a time as this, and it just seems uh, the right time.
That was on your door hanger.
So much going on. Exactly. And that's why it was there is because that was a verse God gave for me. And just a little side note, if I become discouraged or I'm thinking, wow, Lord, why, why am I really here? He sent someone, whether it's my pastor or a Bible study, uh, member, they speak on that verse. And it's random, you know, I don't ask them and they're not saying, they'd just say, you know, for such a time as this. So he reminds me clearly that this is where I should be.
Amen.
So it's very comforting to know that I'm not in.
Yes.
So, so that's why I'm there.
Okay. Well, that's, that's a good reason. I had a very similar uh, experience with directing the classical conversations community. I really, it's just kind of out of the blue. I felt God put it on my heart to step up into the leadership position when I hadn't really been involved other than saying, this is what our family's doing, being a part of the community. And God just put it on my heart to direct that classical conversations community kind of out of the blue. And that's really, and I, it's the same, same thing. When you fall back on it, when you're discouraged, when you're encountering hardship, you can always go back to, no, this is clearly where God wants me. And that's very comforting. So you've been in the position now for a year and I have not attended a school board meeting since you've been on the school board. I have only gone to one before that. And that's probably bad on me, but I only have so much time. And again, thank you for putting the time in. But help us understand what does the school board do? What's their purpose? And, um, kind of go into that. And if I need to, I've got a few more questions for that.
Okay. Technically, the school board has only one employee and that's the superintendent. So it's our job to find the right person to fill that spot who has a passion for the schools, passion for the students to, um, just do the best that he can in in improving the learning environment. So if you get really technical, that's, that's our big job, that and setting a budget for the school district. Now, if that were only it, it would seem easier because we have so much that comes before us. Um, we, we have an academics committee. There is a policy committee, um, a finance committee. We have added two other committees. There's a facilities committee. There's a committee who's about to begin overseeing staff and hiring, uh, teachers who are interested in kind of overseeing that, how to main, how to retain them and hire others.
And those are committees of?
Another new.
I'm sorry, those are committees of the, the people that are elected or those are committees of people you appoint?
Um, those are headed by board. And then anyone in the community can be involved in that. They are all open to the community and those vested in our children and in, in this community. So, uh, some of them we ask to participate. We know they're interested and it's always good to have the stakeholders involved in these and it gets the word out. So I, I like the transparency. I like the idea that, you know, if, if parents uh, want to say so, they can have a say so. They can come and they can participate. They can, you know, hey, I don't like that or hey, why don't you try this? So there's plenty of opportunity to draw parents and other community members who want to be involved.
Okay. And I, I interrupted you, uh, talking about the, what is the school board doing? You were talking about the, the uh, committees.
Yeah. Those, those committees are, um, positive ways that administration, uh, brings information to us. Uh, academics, there is a Dr. Lau who is in administration and there are, it's called MCIP. And these are Missouri requirements that the schools have to follow for the success of the students. So she spends a lot of time organizing the data and bringing it for us. So we can, uh, we can see what's happening in the schools, in the classrooms themselves and how we are meeting standards that are required. Um, there is a, a finance, a lot goes into the finance and because you have such a varied background of board members, we aren't all qualified in all these areas, you know, we, we can't stand alone. So we rely on these administration members to, to do the work of it. So we're kind of like an appeals court and an oversight committee that makes sure that these things are done for the best of the community, for the good of them.
Okay. So you guys meet every Monday or is it just once a month on Monday? What, how much of a time commitment is this for you?
Uh, we, we meet once a month on a Monday and it's usually the fourth Monday of the month. Um, if we have to change it, we do, but that's technically it. So the community gets, uh, just gets the, oh. Hmm. So the community can have opportunity. If they know it's a steady time, it just is better for them to get used to it and, and they can figure out how to participate in it then.
Sure.
But what happens before then are those committee meetings that, uh, work is done in those committee meetings. And that's what's brought to the board, um, for approval, for disapproval, um. So there's a lot of reading that goes along with that. Each, each committee has paperwork that's sent to us. Each administrator has paperwork that's sent to us that hopefully we read before the meeting. So the meetings don't last 24 hours. So if we do, if we do our due diligence, we're prepared for the meetings and to get the, get the work done to finish it.
Okay. So per month, how many, how many hours would you say a school board member or you at least put in a month?
You should probably ask my husband that. Oh, um, just in meeting time, it's probably one, two, three, four, five, six, 15 or 16 hours.
Okay.
Um, outside of that, now outside of that, there are community commitments which, uh, are sometimes banquets. Sometimes we, we made a trip to Jefferson City last week for the Founder's Day to appeal to our office holders for funds for the schools. Um, so there's those kinds of commitments also. And that probably, that's much more enjoyable than the meetings themselves. It's being in the community and participating in the events of the community.
Okay. Wow. So quite, quite a time commitment really. And is it, is it a paid position at all? Do they reimburse you at all?
If we travel like to Jeff City, they reimburse us for the gas and food. If it's out of pocket. Now Jeff City, we drove, uh, this, a school vehicle. And they fed us most of the time. So there was only one meal that I had to be reimbursed for.
Okay. But as far as the position itself, it's, it's not a paid position like the city council. Okay.
Correct. And there, I, I forgot, there is, um, a requirement by the Missouri Board of School Boards. They require 18 and a half hours, um, study. We have to complete 18 and a half hours of committed work over the internet to, um, to learn about what our job is. Some of that we get to do in person when we attend this MSA, uh, conference. So we can glean some hours off of that. But otherwise we do this over the internet and we watch, watch videos and we take tests over what we've seen. So there, there's those kinds of commitments also. So it's like continued ed credits.
Okay. That makes sense. And that's just, that's only required for the new members or is that every year?
There are new hours every year that we have to do, but not the 18 and a half hour commitment like a new member.
Okay. So all these, so the school board has oversight and you mentioned a policy committee and a finance committee. So how much of a role does the school board play in the curriculum? Like there's, I'm sure it's been a couple of years ago now, there was a big rigmarole across the country about CRT and other various, uh, issues that parents were finding, especially during COVID, when they started to see what their kids were learning. And you saw all the people getting up in arms and, you know, uh, getting in heated discussions at the school board meetings and some of these went viral. How much, how much of a role does the school board play in what the children are being taught?
We certainly have to, um, we get to see the policies that are handed down to us from Jeff City. A lot of policy is done there and approved through our, um, representatives that's put forth through them. So some of it is very political. Now, if there, we, we get to read over it and make sure that it, it fits our environment, it fits our community. And as it stands now, there hasn't been anything that that would make me nervous about a CRT infraction. Did I, did that make sense?
Yes.
I haven't been concerned yet over anything that's come across, uh, my desk on the paperwork for that. So and to be honest, that's, that was one of my concerns also is what we're, are we really teaching our students how to think or are we teaching them what to think? And that had bothered me like most parents as we watched what happened during COVID. So it has been a positive experience to know where our community stands on a lot of these issues.
That's good to hear.
We certainly, yeah, we certainly expect teachers to teach curriculum. And not, you know, not, um, not have to deal with a lot of those things that we see portrayed on TV.
So do you actually? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, do you have, uh, so you actually, do you get the textbooks and look at the, the textbooks? Obviously you can't vet all of the stuff, even amongst the whole board. I can't imagine you could vet a hundred percent of the curriculum. So how, how do you have that warm fuzzy that we don't have CRT in our curriculum here in, in this county or this district?
That's a great question. I think what helps me is knowing the policies that come down from Jefferson City. Knowing the requirements that this MCIP six requires of us, they have to meet certain learning standards. And if you aren't focusing on those standards, how to read, how to add two plus two, how to, you know, what's your history? If our students aren't successful in those, um, then we're not teaching what we're supposed to teach. And that comes across in the data that is drawn by Dr. Lau and the ones who, the administrators who oversee that part of it.
Okay.
And what, what also helps me is the character of the administrators. I have been blessed by many of them who are passionate about what they do, about students, about their welfare in the classroom and out of it, about their capabilities and ability to learn in the classroom. I, I admire many of them because of the work that they put into uh, making schools and classrooms positive learning environments. So that helped me as well to know that many of them are Christian. Many of them have a heart for God, which, you know, that's the best part about it.
Absolutely.
To know that he, that they have relationship with him and, and that's, that's wonderful to me.
Absolutely. So are you familiar with James Lindsay at all? Have you ever heard of James Lindsay?
The name is familiar, but I'll need more.
He has a, a podcast called the New Discourses Podcast and he took it upon himself. He's an atheist unfortunately, but he's, he's He's an atheist, unfortunately, but he's, he's uh very smart in certain terms, obviously, and he took it upon himself to dive into this critical race theory issue and he's got a, it's a great podcast, I don't listen to most of them because they're so long, but he has a little set called Bullets. And he's kind of like the go-to authority, at least in the circles I listen to on critical race theory, and he's not, he's not like partisan at all. Um, he's just, he literally dives into all the critical race theory stuff and helps break it down for administrators, politicians, me, you know, different people. So I, I, there, he's got these bullet episodes that are twelve minutes each. I'll uh, I'll send you some of those just to help keep an eye out for some of the verbiage and stuff to look out for. I know.
I, I appreciate that because they, they try to uh hide it. They try to wrap it in, in words or terminology that you really have to dig it out to find that it's there.
Yes, yes, they do. Absolutely. And they bend, they bend the definitions, you know, they, they I can't remember the term, but there's, there's a strategic term they use for subverting definitions and altering definitions and stuff like that. So yeah, I'll send those to you. Um, it looks like our timers, we're gonna have to reset our timer here in a, in a little bit, but um uh another question, I, you've got the finance committee, can you walk through as much as you know, uh how school districts are funded? Like I know I say I pay two thousand dollars in property taxes. Like most of that, like eighteen hundred and fifty dollars or something is gonna be going towards the Saint Joe School District. Do you know how that money ends up to the, the school and the, the uh, the student?
You know, I should know that, that was part of our eighteen and a half hours in a nutshell. We get some of that revenue, but it covers a wide range of output. Because you have, you know, we deal with millions of dollars in the school district. But it has to cover everything. You know, and what passes in front of us for approval are bills and expenditures on certain things which cover everything from coffee to gas in the buses, to building improvement, to teacher salaries, uh to paper for the classrooms. So it's amazing and eye-opening to see where that money goes. Because it, before I had kind of an idea because of some of the positions I've held in schools. But nothing to this extent, knowing that the expenditures are way bus, bus rides to ballgames, referees, um jerseys for the kids. Now, there's also other ways we get money. These are special allotments, you know, we get grants to cover some of this. There are things the government can um, can give through those grants, there's other monies that we've had come in to cover the cost of, say, early learning centers for our pre-k's. So there's monies that come in that are earmarked for that. So it's not just the taxes, but it's governmental money that's approved through Jeff City. Uh, that's pru- approved through just donations. You know, sometimes we get to, get to appreciate uh book monies. Or here are, here's a set of books for the, for students or it, it just.
I know, I understand, it's complicated for sure.
Yeah. It is, it is, and I'm really glad I don't have to deal with that. You know, other than reading through them and knowing, you, you know, back in the dark ages when I was in school. Who had a laptop? None of us had laptops in class, you know, we did, no cell phones. So it was paper and pencil and our parents had to buy the calculator. It, when those became part of the learning environment, which was in my high school years. So even before that, we didn't have those expenditures. So it, the expenditures have just grown and become uh almost out.
So uh you mentioned, you explained some of how the school board has oversight over, over the finances and exactly what they get to look at in that. Um, I wanna be considerate of your time, so I kinda wanna wind down and close out here. What would be your advice, first of all, to somebody like me who I homeschool? And I really don't have interaction with the public schools a whole lot, but I care about the public schools because I care about this country, obviously. You know, these millions of kids that are coming up through the public schools are the future of our country. And so I care, but I'm, I homeschool my kids and most of, most of the circles I run in, we homeschool our kids. Do you have any advice or why should I care? Or any other further ways to have influence or help in the public school sector?
Certainly, I covet your prayers, not just for the board, but for this community. Because, well, just because we need them. And uh, God is always the vital ingredient that we need in, in this community and in the schools. Uh, we see what has happened in them when we remove God.
Yes.
But these, not everyone is fortunate enough to have parents that can homeschool.
Absolutely.
Many don't have the funding to attend private schools where God is still included. But I find that there are so many wonderful teachers in the public realm. So many wonderful administrators in the public realm who give their best every day to the public school system. These are communit- these are the community members of the future who's will be involved with your homeschooled children.
Yes.
So it's it's just vastly important to stay in contact with that, to attend the meetings, to understand what um what we're up against or what our children face every day. And it's not, the finances I wouldn't say are the biggest thing, what is the biggest thing is teachers. And the impact they have on the kids in the classroom. And if they are uncomfortable, you know, if the community isn't welcoming, if the classroom environment isn't good, we don't retain good teachers. So that needs prayer, you know, we want them to to want to stay and have a positive impact on this community. So in my mind, I can't separate homeschool from public. Because you will always interact. Um, you will, and in fact, I count on your support as a homeschool community because of your faith. And that's, that's the largest part of why we need that interaction between the two. That they, you know, and it can encourage the public school system to know that they um that they have you alongside them, you know, it's not you're not anti-this, anti-that, it has nothing to do with that, that's just what you feel your family needs or what you want to do with your family. So it's not an anti-public school, it's just pro homeschool yours.
So how, how can I uh offer that support? I mean, I, I pray for you. But how, how else could I offer that support and, yeah?
Attend those community events, you know, pick a school, any school and kinda attend an event there. Uh, a spelling bee or, you know, a soccer game, um geography bowl. A high school debate, I, I was fortunate enough to judge a debate at Lafayette. And it was wonderful. Just the magnitude of learning that those particular students did. So there's a lot of different ways to show support for them to attend board meetings, because sometimes we get to hand out awards to athletes or to spellers, you know, to uh just different parts of, of the school system. Let's see, um certainly vote. That is a huge one for the church community to vote. It is vital that the church has a say in what happens in this community. So if, you know, I, I don't want there to be a disconnect. That just because it's public school, my kids don't attend there, well, I don't care about it, well.
It's still, it's your, it's your community.
It, it is, you're invested here.
Future. It's your kids.
Yes.
Peers.
Exactly, exactly. So because we're getting close to um an election coming up, it is, it is paramount that the church gets out and votes in this election.
Absolutely.
Um, because of the candidates. So that is, that is one huge role that not only you, but you know, the homeschool community and the private sector community can participate and help, help us as a whole.
Absolutely. Well, I've, I'll certainly try and be involved in in that as much, in promoting that as much as I can. When is that uh voting day for that election, do you know?
Oh, I don't know the exact day right offhand. It seemed like it was April.
Yeah, I wanna say it was beginning of April also, cuz I don't think we have a runoff like we did last time, or not a runoff, but a, a whittling down like we did for the city council.
We don't, but Andrew, let me mention one, there are a couple other ways. I attend a Bible study at Brookdale Church on Thursday mornings and that church has invested in Mark Twain, which is about to be repurposed into an early learning center. But that church invested in that local school as after, after-school uh care, after-school events. They read to students. Um, they have volunteered for those things, they have volunteered to take goodies to the school on, on different occasions. So that's an example of how the church or a community member like you and your bride to be involved in in that school that's close to you, even if your children don't attend. But they always need someone to read to students or to come alongside them to encourage better reading or um after-school events. Um, I, I so admire that about Brookdale because this is a group of older women who don't have children in it, they might have grandchildren, but they don't have their own children in it. But they are invested.
Yeah, it's a, it's a difficult thing and I, I ask these questions out of sincerity because ultimately, for me, I, obviously I homeschool, so I, you understand that there's a certain level of like, obviously, I, I believe that ultimately, no matter what, the education is the parent's responsibility. You know, whether you're there in public school or, or not, or homeschooled or private school or charter school or whatever, it's the parent's responsibility. But so I'm homes- I homeschool and I personally, I, I mean, I, we may, we're probably gonna disagree on things and that's fine. Uh, you know, ultimately, my goal would be to have more educational uh or a free market in the education marketplace and to stop uh, you know, using government funds to pay for education, like, you know, coercing per, coercing people out of their money to pay for public education. I think it's a, it's a flawed model ultimately, and there's little to do reformed. And while, you know, I think we need to build parallel institutions, I can't I can't just let the public schools go down the drain. I mean, I can't, I can't forsake the entire institution. It's like, I feel like I've gotta do both. I'm, I'm doing for me in my house, I'm doing for my extended circles and community, um trying to support and facilitate there. But, and, you know, I've, one of the things I've been, I've been trying to learn about is the school choice and I, I know I said I'm winding down and I don't wanna open up a whole nother can of worms here, but with the school choice funding, um, you know, I was kind of personally, I was more of, of interested in getting the money follows the child so that we can introduce uh free market in the education marketplace, but people that I I trust, who are a lot smarter than I am. Uh, the HSLDA, Homeschool Legal Defense Association and uh Robert Borton, CEO of Classical Conversations and, and other people that have looked into it a lot more than me are, they're a hard no on that because of the, the inevitable strings that's gonna come with government money into the home, you know, the domain that right now we have the, well, we have the freedom and I believe it's God-given freedom that's um, at least right now, recognized by the state uh to not have any strings attached. Of course, you know, we pay for the public schools and our own children's education on top of that. And
Right.
So I, it's a, it's an honest question about that, that I'm conflicted because I'm trying to build, I'm a proponent of ultimately, long-term get rid of government schools, you know, public-funded education, compulsory education, all that, which again, we probably disagree on, but I can't just throw in the towel and say, okay, all, everybody that's not fortunate enough to be able to homeschool their kids or everybody that uh doesn't feel like that's what God wants them to do, you know, cuz I believe there's people that do want their kids in public school that are Christian and stuff. I'm not willing to just let let the devil have all that, you know what I mean? So I'm trying, I'm trying to find a I only have so much to invest and I'm trying to uh do what I can in both arenas. So I appreciate you taking the time and investing back in your community now that you've raised your kids. And like you said, you thought you were retired and now you've, you've gone back and reinvesting in the community and I, I so wish more people would do that when they, because to be honest people my age just, you know, we're raising families, we're, we're investing economically in the, in the grand scheme economy, we're we're building the country, raising our kids, you know, and that's taking a huge amount of time and, and financial resources. And you've already done that and now you find yourself with the freedom, you could just be vacationing. And so thank you for taking the time to invest in our children, in the community.
I. You're welcome, thank you, thank you for seeing that, um, I. It, it is a tough thing because we have abdicated our position. As teachers of our children. And I think. We have abdicated a lot of things to the government and to. Uh, the public arena. But that's a done deal for right now and. To reengage is what we really need to re- get parents to reengage. And not. Suppose that the school is now the parent of their children.
Yeah.
Because they're not.
Absolutely.
And I, I so agree, it is on the parents to educate their children. But because of that abdication, because it has become the, the way to school. Is public education. We don't. We, we have to engage in that. We, because we still want the best. For those kids who are economically challenged, who come to school and. The schools provide the only meals they have. I have children who over, they are. My father, in fact, who is eighty-nine years old. Packed uh, backpacks full of food for kids to take home over the weekend. So they would have meals to eat.
Wow.
So some of this, some of this public education is vital for those kind of students. Who have, who have um. Economic need.
Yeah, and you're not even talking about education at that point.
No, no, they need a meal, they need warmth in the school building, they need someone to show them love. They need uh, caretaking, so all of that has to happen before you can educate.
Yeah.
To know that there's a safe place for their little bodies or big bodies. The number of homeless children in this city would surprise you.
I'm sure.
There is um, there is a, a teacher. A connection or. Uh, I forget the, I forget the real name of it, where I went, they had a teacher workday there. Where teachers can go in and get supplies for their classrooms. One section of their building was dedicated to the supplies for homeless children.
Wow.
I was stunned at that prospect that we have homeless children attending our schools.
Wow.
It, it.
So.
It blew me away.
This just strikes me as, it's so. Like the church, this, you know, charity is. Uh, well, the chief, first Chief Justice of the Supreme Court, John Jay. Famously said that charity is no part of the legislative duty. And I think it's safe to extend, extend that to the government, but. It's that way for a reason, I mean, the church. Granted, people have rejected God, but the church has let the government. Usurp the place that the church should be having. So how do we, I, this is a broad topic, but. How does the church reclaim its, its rightful place as. Uh, taking care of those people, I mean. Because it's not fair to just cut the. Cut the kids off, you know, those homeless kids. If you were to just hypothetically cut government funding, you know, cut those, those school meal programs. Which costs me money, I'm sure, both federal tax dollars and county tax dollars and state tax dollars, but. You know, that's the church's job to take care of the, the widows, the orphans. And to be a support network and to be that community that people can rely on and to encourage the parents to. Care about their kids, so how does the church reengage, like you said, how? I don't even know, how do we, how do we take that back up, take that away from the government? Because that's gotta happen before we can. Get the government out of it.
That's why I brought up Brookdale Church, because they have re-engaged. They chose to come alongside that Mark Twain school and, and help them. It is a, it, it was a little community school. And you'll find that those, all the elementary schools, the high schools, the middle schools are community schools. Those communities that surround them have ample opportunity. To step up their game and come alongside those students. Now, the trouble is, these days with inflation like it is, most people's monies are spent. On just surviving.
Yes.
Both parents have to work. So again, the school picks up the slack when the parents can't pick up their child till five o'clock. Or they have to have the child at school by, by seven thirty.
Yeah. Which goes back to the, the other head of the snake, the Federal Reserve, which is a huge reason why we're in this economic mess. And, but we just gotta, we gotta go with what we got and we gotta try and figure this mess out.
We, we do, and I, and I think you brought it back to where it needs to be, it is on the church. The church has the best message these children could ever hear. They won't, you know, that's not the message they get in school, a- and it's not that's. It, it's just a message of salvation that brings hope to them. And that's the message, the church has opportunity. Now, they can't browbeat the students, but they can certainly demonstrate Christ-like love to.
Demonstrate, right.
A- as they come alongside, as they step up like Brookdale has. I know there's others that do, but, but because I'm familiar with the ladies in this, who attend Brookdale. I, I am just, some of them were educators, some, one was a vice principal in the school. Uh, some were teachers, some were just moms of, of kids at one time. Who have stayed the course and stayed in that community to minister to those, to those families.
I, I don't wanna take up that much more of your time, I really appreciate. Uh, you doing this interview with me and taking the time for my audience to explain this, I know I've learned a lot in your, it's been a. Uh, a challenge, inspiration to me. Uh, before we go, I asked you to consider a resource recommendation, that's one thing I. I'm gonna try and do every episode this year is to try and give a resource recommendation. And when I have a guest, I'm gonna let them do that, so is there a resource recommendation, a book you've read? A, a documentary you've watched, just, or a movie or a radio show or something that you would recommend to my audience? About anything.
Wow. You know, I totally forgot that part, Andrew. Well, I'm gonna let you down on that one, I. I, I just, off the top of my head, I just, I can't think of one right now, but. But my head is swimming with all these, all the different things that I have read and they're prepared for. And I can't settle on a topic for you.
Okay, well. In, then I will, I will go ahead and substitute in a resource recommendation for my audience and that's, and for you also, I'll send you. A link to the new dis- New Discourses podcast by James Lindsay. And uh, specifically his Bullets series, they're short twelve minutes. Uh, because the rest of his podcasts are like, uh, they're over an hour and they're really. Deep and boring, but these bullets are pretty good, also if, if you see a podcast. He gets around on the podcast networks a lot, if you see a James Lindsay interview, uh, go ahead and listen to it and. He's a very insightful gentleman, so. Kim, uh, before. Yeah, yeah.
Hang on, you said on any topic, let me, we, a friend of mine gave me. A book, a book title. That uh, she just gave that to me today. It's called Explosive Power of a Greater Affection. Explosive Power of a Greater Perfection. Uh, affection.
Okay.
And I think it's, I think it's Henry Chalmers. I know it's Chalmers for sure, but I wanna say it's Henry Chalmers.
Okay, I got that written down, thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to say uh, before we end the conversation here?
I, I appreciate your heart. For schooling, not only for yours, but to, to try and negotiate. A, a way to help the community through the public school. And um, I think that's a start. For all of us to engage in, in the community. Whatever path that takes. Because that's God's call on our lives is to engage. It is to love them, which is the hardest sometimes. So. So thank you for that, thank you for that.
Well, it's my pleasure and I uh, really again, thank you for your time. I know we went longer than I said, so I apologize and I thank you for taking the time to have this conversation. And I'll be sure and send you a link to it, alright, Kim?
Thank you, uh, thank you for making it easy for me, it's a little intimidating, but, but I appreciate it. Thank you, Andrew.
Alright, well, I hope you enjoyed that conversation with Kim Miller, I. Hope that you were able to gain some insights there. I wanna mention that in the description for this podcast is the. Link to the Bullets podcast by James Lindsay and the book that she recommended is also linked there in the podcast description. Truly, education is an integral part of the defense and maintenance of liberty. So if you learn something, be sure and share it with a friend, somebody in your network. Share the podcast, send them to www.mindyourliberty.com. On that website, there's links to all the different platforms you can listen to, or they can just se- search on whatever platform they're on. And I always appreciate any feedback you got, send it to mindyourliberty@gmail.com. Thanks for listening and until next month, be sure and mind your liberty.